Good evening, I'd like to call to order the July 2019 Holy Grant Town Council Meeting. Please join me in the pleading the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a forum tonight, and the first item on the agenda, we have a delegation. This is Aine Glave, the Executive Director of Virginia Main Street Initiative, here to speak about the Community Heart and Soul Project. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. I think we have a short video. Community Heart and Soul is a field-tested planning method for small cities, towns, and rural communities, based on three powerful principles: involve everyone, focus on what matters, and play the long game. Developed by the Orton Family Foundation, Community Heart and Soul helps towns move toward a brighter, more prosperous future rooted in what matters most to the people who live there. The seed for Heart and Soul is planted by businessman Lyman Orton, who with his three sons is proprietor of the Vermont Country Store. Orton served on his town's planning commission when he was wrestling with divisive development proposals. Orton was frustrated that decisions being made that would shape the town's future were without guidance from the majority of the residents. There had to be a better way.
We call it Community Heart and Soul, guided by what matters most. What matters most to whom? To the residents, to the way people live their lives.
If our conversations focused on what matters most to our communities, then what conclusions do we come to about our towns, economic development, and the future of this area? Any community can just stumble into the future. We have a real opportunity here to seek out and grow in a way that reflects the whole community's values and ideas.
Almost any small town will benefit from going through a Community Heart and Soul process because it brings the residents of the community closer together. And as they get closer together, the differences tend to fade away, and the things that they care about the most, things that matter most, replace the differences. They become more trusted in one another, they become more collaborative in their decision-making and in their discussions about their community, and they become stronger believers in their community. So, people will continue to live there, new people will move in, and people will invest more in their community.
So that was a very brief summary of the Orton Foundation, and I'm really excited because there's an opportunity where the Orton Foundation Community Heart and Soul has partnered with Virginia Main Street Program here in the state of Virginia. And it's a pilot program, so it's new for Virginia. And it makes sense that that partnership does exist because the Orton Foundation Community Heart and Soul is about collecting at the end, you have a strategy or plan of action, and out of that, the Main Street community can figure out which direction they want to take on the action items that came forth from the downtown. This is a broad strategic plan. And what also makes sense is that the three principles: involve everyone, play the long game, and focus on what matters are the same principles that the Virginia Main Street Program is involved. I'm very biased, I'm the Executive Director of the Virginia Main Street Program, have it for seven years, and I am a coach for the Orton Foundation. The Orton Foundation, as a pilot program, has found a grant to fund this program for Bowling Green, for the two of 5,000 a phase, there are four phases to this process. The timeline of this program is anywhere from a year and a half to two years, depending on how you go through the phases. The first phase is laying the groundwork, it's really the behind-the-scenes, it's putting the team together, it's looking at the community network analysis, it's developing your work plan, how you're going to communicate the Community Heart and Soul Program. That program, that process takes anywhere from two to three months. The next step is getting to know your community, that is the longest process, because that is where you're gathering your stories from your communities. You're trying to find the hidden voices, so you're looking, you're collecting the stories. For this size of community, my understanding is about 200 stories that we should be collecting throughout the community, and it is finding the themes throughout those stories and developing what they call Heart and Soul Statements out of that. That next stage is making decisions, so you're figuring out which direction you want to go, what are the common themes that may be in there, and also what is the impact and feasibility of the different action plans that have come out of that and that you want to go forward. That process can take anywhere from four to six months, depending on how many priorities that's come out of that process. And then the last phase is taking action, which is just putting the resources in place, developing the different collaborations, what you'll see in certain organizations, some nonprofits, some individuals will step forward and pick different priorities that are generated by the community. But what's really nice about the Orton Foundation is over a decade, they've done over 60 communities throughout the United States. It is a rural-based program, they've done towns as low as 400 people to a maximum of 50,000. They've invested over $10 million over the 10 years, so they do have the model, the resources to make it succeed for conclusion for the community that's not sure how to go about collecting. It's basically a residence-based model for catalysts for change, where you're getting their input to make a decision. The good thing that comes out of that is that typically there's a greater sense of faith, you will find that new leadership and new volunteers will come forward, collaborations that you didn't think exist will come up, there's a lot of built-in trust will also develop it. We have seen it go anywhere from an economic driver to more of a kind of feel-good, depending on which direction the community is looking for, because a lot of it comes from the community is what they're trying to do. So, I gave you a really short synopsis, I do have a brochure that talks about the four different phases in specific, there are milestones to move through the four different phases, along with success stories of communities very small to very large, and you see what came out of these different communities. You're in a situation where there are a lot of other communities that they have gone into that were, you know, not in a very good place, they were dealing with 100% occupancy, you know, people were leaving the community, people were yelling at the city council, I mean, so you're in a good place, I think this is a good, with the coming on of the Main Street Program, I think it ties in really nicely because it will help determine the transformational strategies that the Main Street community will go forward and you as a community want to invest in as you go forward as a community. I'm happy you take any questions that you may have, and hopefully you'll support the resolution today, because what comes out of this is typically a stronger health, you got a more economic vibrant community over a period. It is not a short fix, it is, you know, you've got two years of research, and then you've got several years after that of work.
Thank you. Counsel, have any...
Thank you very much for the presentation. So what investment do we need to make this time?
Basically, the investment for the town is probably meeting spaces when they need it, maybe printing facilities to create different things, ways to help to communicate the Heart and Soul Program that's out there, so what's the best way to do that. It does work well to have the town and this body here as a big supporter of this program. It will not work if it's just a Main Street Program.
So, which area do you defend, Bowling Green?
Well, I'm originally from Ashland, and I work in Fredericksburg, so I'm a big believer in community engagement, and I love what I do as a Main Street Director, and I'm really excited. I had looked at Orton Foundation six years ago, when we were looking to create our vision for the downtown Fredericksburg, and they have the resources, and where they have grown in six years, I'm just, I'm so excited that there's this tool out there that did not exist before. Because what, as a coach, what we will do is have training with the team that you put forward, along with different deep guys, depending on what needs you need, and then we're always here for you. I mean, literally through phone, email, Martin knows, he's texting me at midnights of the hours, we're here to make, to make this, everybody to be happy at the end.
So there's more $5,000 block grants?
Yes, yes.
Do you have a question, a comment?
Can you explain how it ties well in with the Main Street Program, with the district and startup here?
Well, the tie in well with Main Street and the fact that it will help the Main Street Board determine which direction and what do they want to have as their overall transformational strategy, which, there's four components in Main Street, which is design, promotion, organization, and economic capability. So it will help determine the goal and the direction that they're going to go the next five to 10 years.
Okay. In your packet, we have a resolution stating the town's support for the Community Heart and Soul Project, including but not limited to representation on the Heart and Soul Team by one planner, one county council planner, one town counselor, providing meeting space at town hall, and assistance disseminating information about the project via the town website, social media outlets, other means of communications. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve, but the resolution has been...
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, here now, we will hold a roll call vote.
Yes.
Okay, we have six yeses and one no. The motion passes. We'll work with, who is the nominee? Who is the nominee? Oh, it's, we'll work with council to name and staff to name who will serve on this committee. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think you will be the first, this is exciting in the state of Virginia, to accept this program. So that's, that will come out of that.
Oh, thank you.
I thought Orton should have, Orton cannot accept it, or they're just...
Orton's not signed a resolution yet, so you just forget a head of it.
So I just needed a syllable, but anyway, very good. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, moving on. Mr. Mayor, just one thing, I do just like to point out that we did have some people in the audience here that came in to show their support for the program as well. So I just wanted to point that out, they're here for that. Mike Mann is one of the big supporters of the downtown Main Street Program and helping us with this, the Heart and Soul one here. Adrian and Herman James, they really want to be good volunteers and supporters and helpers. So I just wanted to bring that attention to everybody.
Well, thank you all, thank you for attending. Okay, next item on the agenda is the public comment section. Anybody that would like to address counsel on any matter, please come to the podium and stay with me. I'd also like to welcome Mayor Francis back to the council meeting. And Dan, we'll get his in a few minutes, but thank you both for your many years of service on council. We look forward to you maybe on the Saturday at the table sometime in the future. Okay, here are no public comments, we'll move on to staff reports. Bowling Green, please. We've been happening in Little Town for the last two days. Unwanted, what's the deal? This is very true. Any of Mr. Mayor members of council? Are there any questions on the staff council?
Chief, it's always good, but could you give us kind of a real tape of what happened?
He has just one overview of the situation yesterday with the escaped inmate being captured here in Tannock.
So just after lunchtime yesterday, the jail notified the dispatch center, they had this escape, attempted escape, and that person scaled two 12-foot chain, which is a constant in a wire on both sides, and was able to make it out of the facility and enter the 77,000 acres of snakes' ticks and bugs in Port Hakee Hill, which where apparently he hid out overnight until dark, and at which point he made his way towards Belgrade. He was captured just a few minutes after 6 o'clock this morning, and he goes back to his dorm room. I made a notification to one of our officers to come out and assist yesterday, because him and I, in tandem, went down to the facility, set the media staging area for those guys, systeming those areas, and we're doing it ourselves. I can't give you a whole lot of updates on what the, I know there was a, there was a D break today, and I wasn't invited, so. It's public information, there is some things.
Chief, I know you and I had a conversation about this last year, and Caroline County talked about doing this. I even had a conversation with Justice Lee about it, and we kind of got shut out. I asked him, I said, "I was a town notified about this, since it is in our backyard, and if anybody was to be out, you know, we're closest town." And with random procedures, and I was basically told, "I'm on the business." I think it's something that we might need to get with the county, and to see what they have going forward, as far as any type of action plan, if this were to ever happen again, and also, you know, to make sure that we're notified if things get better off, and even involvement, and even when you're captured in our area.
So Reese, you have something, the mayor and county administrator, county administrator, Mr. City are the key, I'm going to be sure to bring this up. One thing I do want to remind everybody of, we are recording these meetings, and particularly council members, if you do not use your mics, you will not come through on the video that we're posting on the website. So, please, every time you speak, remember to use the mic.
Okay, and if you need to, we can have a conversation with the sheriff to make sure that we're included full circle on these events. I know we were assisted initially, and Captain Crowder expresses appreciation to me last night for your help, so if we're going to be involved, I'd like to see us full circle involved so that we're aware of what's going on in this town.
I think I made a comment, so to open. Obviously, that facility is not part of our corporate limits here, I think we, because of the close proximity to the town, and certainly with this event happening, and the capture say, they really need to have a seat at the table going forward. So, I'm sure with the amount of agencies involved, both local, state, and federal, the tip release and policy changes forthcoming, I can say from the response standpoint collectively, local, state, and federal law enforcement worked together well to set up perimeter, command posts, immediately in the area, all the things necessary to produce good results. And he was, again, captured without incident. Again, I'm just as unhappy with the location of capture as anybody else is, so I was out until 1:30 this morning, riding, turning myself, and trying to locate him, so I think I made, said at least.
If I may, also too, that I noticed that we had it out on the social media page, well, before the Caroline Alert system on her phones, you know.
In theory... They wouldn't, in theory, the lead agency would be the representative of all public information. I think in this particular circumstance, rather than cause so much public outcry, too, we could figure out a direction.
Is it possible to do alerts, I mean, we get an AM or an alert, something like that? That would be easy.
All of that's run through the dispatch center?
Right, that is, yeah.
And the chief and I spoke yesterday on whether we should send out a press release, and we both agreed that since this was in the county, and being led by the county and the federal agencies, that we would follow in line where we needed to be, and wouldn't put out our own press release, avoid not to be any confusion on who the lead agency was, and bring more attention to the town residents that it was truly something that was going to be handled by our police department, so. But the Caroline Alerts, and we'll make sure we stress this to the sheriff, that we need to get these alerts out as soon as we can. And again, when you do put out alerts, just keep in mind that with the manpower that was allocated to the situation, there were several false alarms, and those pulled those assets away from where they needed to be.
So, it's a catch 22, whatever you decide to do, it's just, it's just how you bite that apple, so. But again, please that he was located and without incident, the dispoints didn't seem to be any damage to the elements of vehicles or anything that might have injured his town.
Well, thank you for participating, and I...
Thank you.
Any other questions? I would just like to thank you for all your hard work and looking at your numbers here, what you've taken care of, and your staff has taken care of this month. I hate to bring the attention to the DUIs, but I'm glad that we're catching them and getting them off the street, and that's a lot of good work there. Eventually, there's increases in the town traffic. You only have two minutes of traffic, travel.
I took, did I not, is there a no speeding tickets this month? You're missing it? What is that?
72 between uniform stations.
Oh, that's a nice sample, okay.
Just to remind you, turn your mics off if you're not using them, because I think that's where our feedback's coming back, is when everybody has their mics on. Thank you.
Before I go, I don't want to hold you too long, I wanted to advise council, within the last two hours, I was finally able to get it live. I don't know if you guys and ladies are familiar with the Nextdoor app, for those of you that love the apps, the town of Bowling Green has, we're going to start that as a, basically as a, I know we have Facebook, and we have Messenger, and we seem like we have a bunch of apps, but this is the one. It breaks it down to our neighborhood, and it's inclusive to our neighborhood to be included in this, in this app. You have to register with your address to be approved, and that's not to go as to policy. But basically, we're acting on this because there is a report to police prompt that will allow you to have contact with us, as far as reporting around suspicious activity, as well as your neighbors, so. That's something that is active now, if you go to your Google Apps or your Apple Apps, your App Store, you'll be able to find, it's just Nextdoor, spelled exactly as it sounds, and you can download that app, enter your address, and it actually created a neighborhood. And Milford in Bowling Green already had one, this was the one centralized, like just in Bowling Green, just to corporate limits. If you want to report something to us as a police department, there is a button you would need to push to report to police, and that would be everything provided, so. Any questions? And again, there'll be some bugs, so still use 911 for any trouble.
Yes, absolutely.
And true emergency, I mean, if you witness something dangerous, please call 911, but if you have something to report, vehicles, and again, obviously, my phone's always on, but some people are a little apprehensive about reporting things, so, just another app, another avenue that we can use, someone from the police system. Thank you.
I have one more question, I'm sorry. Can I just ask where we are on the policy manual, please?
The committee is working on the policy manual. I know that Valerie is working on it, she just gave me a couple of chapters, she just gave me a couple of chapters tonight.
Still working projects. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Public Works, excuse me, Utilities Monthly Report. Are there any questions on the prepared report? If none, just an update on the sewer project?
Well, actually, I can see it's actually coming to an end, I mean, I can see the light at the end, there are, in two more weeks, they'll be putting in the last manhole. They already vacuum tested the lines, everything's coming up good, good and all.
So is Main Street pretty much complete?
Yes, the last manhole will be at South Main and Milford, and that'll be the last one. More is pretty much done, probably next week. I still got, I get that, I've been working with Tetra Tech on the well, the ramp for the wells, the well protection, hopefully that should be done in a couple of weeks. Don't want to do with our wells.
This time, on the sewer project, the biggest piece of work is going to be connecting where the water main in, on Milford, and bringing it up to Main, and that's also one of the deepest cuts. But the water main is, it replaced, placed back in service, so we're good to go, go on that. But that's going to be the most time-consuming component of the project. And, you see, they can't really tie everybody in until they get those mains in, unless we do a general...
All right, no questions, other questions? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Events Coordinator's Report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me tonight. Just wanted to go over a few things before we dive into the Wine Festival. You'll notice I put a few graphics for Music on the Green on the tables, they are not in my packet, they were, it was just finalized today, and so those are being released to the public as we speak. Please feel free to take a copy with you and throw it up somewhere around town or outside of town. Music on the Green is a really fun event. You'll notice that we have five Fridays in August this year, and we also, we've also extended Music on the Green to the first two Fridays in September, so we have a good lineup, some bands that are just community favorites and that people love, love to come out here, and we have some new, some new performances as well. So it should be a really good time, we're always looking forward to Music on the Green, it's a really fun community event, and free to the public, so I encourage everyone to come out. In addition to Music on the Green, I am actively working on Harvest Festival. We should be getting the marketing launch on that in the next couple of weeks or so. It is our 30th anniversary, as you all know, it's happening on October 19th, and so it should be a special Harvest Festival this year. We also had Clean Sweep on the 1st of June, that was very successful. It was, we had a lot of folks in town, a lot of traffic in town, but I think it was even more successful for our residents in terms of purging for the summer, for the spring. We filled three large box... We filled three large box trucks from Goodwill and hauled that stuff off. So, typically, we fill two, but this year, for this spring, we filled three, so it was a goodie bit. Lastly, the, kind of the big bulk of my report is the Bowling on the Green Virginia Wine Festival that occurred on June 8th. It was a really successful event, and you'll notice the after action report in the packet, which kind of goes over, you've seen this before from me, doing for Harvest Festival and other big events. Goes through kind of the process of planning, marketing, advertising, the day of the event, that sort of thing. Generally speaking, it rained before the event and it rained after the event. But for somehow, somehow, by Mother Nature's grace, it did not rain a drop on event day. It was a nice light cloud coverage, cool temperatures. We had great attendance, it was about, it was about the same as last year. We had hoped for it to grow a little more in terms of attendance. We really believe in, when I say we, I speak on my behalf and behalf of the owners of Old Mansion. We really believe that this is the event that has the potential for branding our town through its rich history. One of the things that we did this year was we streamed the Belmont Stakes Race, which was really successful. I'd like to thank Jeff Voight for his help and hard work, taking care of that and all the logistics on that, there he is. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Jean Davis for coming out and volunteering all day long. Really, really appreciate your help on that event this year and every year. And I'd also like to thank those of you on council that attended the event. It shows your interest in our community, it shows, it shows the residents of the community that you care and that you're involved. So, I want to thank you all very much for coming and for inviting your friends. The big part of the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but you may mostly be interested in the very last page, which is our expenditures and revenues. These numbers are subject to change slightly. We're still tying up a few loose ends financially, but this gives you a good idea of where we landed on the event. My glasses are fogging up. We, we realize a net revenue of $1,123.96 as it stands. Like I said, that number could change slightly, and so at the next council meeting, please expect for me to come to you all with a recommendation for donation to the Education Foundation, which, as you all know, is a condition of the event, that we donate something. Ultimately, you know, again, this is a great event, I'd like to point out that the daughter of Penny Tweedy, the emerse secretariat, was at the event, signing books and engaging with folks, the Williamsburg Royal and crew were out with all their enthusiasm as well. Mayor Satterite came out in full force with a huge group of people, so very appreciative of that. Generally speaking, it was a good event. I do think that in order for us to grow this event and particularly appeal to folks in the region, not just folks in our community, but folks outside of our community, so that we can gain some interest here, we really need to consider some restructuring of the budget and maybe where advertising dollars are spent and maybe how much advertising dollars we have to spend. So, I'd like to look a little bit next year into securing some sponsors, maybe just like a few kind of large anchor sponsors that can offset some of our costs and maybe allow us to advertise, do some radiator advertising in Fredericksburg, Northern Virginia area. I think that might be something that would be worthwhile looking into. Beyond that, it was a great event, and again, I just want to thank you all so much for your support. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Just have one question. Oops, okay. I guess you already answered it, so there weren't any sponsorships like McKesson or anyone who gave?
No, and we've never solicited sponsorships for this today.
Okay.
But I do think that it's something that we should look into next year.
All right. The other question I have on the glasses, do the patrons keep the glasses?
Yes, ma'am.
They do.
I see.
Is that included in the price of a ticket?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions about Wine Festival? Just lastly, I'd like to thank Anne Glave for coming tonight and let you all know how enthusiastic I am about representing the town of Bowling Green, the Bowling Green EDA, and working with the Main Street Group on this Community Heart and Soul Project. I feel very enthusiastic about it, very optimistic. I feel certain that Anne, and working with Anne is going to be very beneficial to us, and she may not, she's going to be steering the boat, she's not going to be rowing it. So, I'm going to be counting on you all and residents here in town to help us reach our goals and develop vision and actually see something happen, see something tangible happen from that. I will be attending the Downtown Intersection Conference in Lynchburg, week after next, and so, is it next week? Week after next, okay, I'm right. I will be attending that, representing Bowling Green. As Anne mentioned, the wonderful public relations opportunities here for Bowling Green, because we are the first to engage in this Heart and Soul, Heart and Soul Community Project in Virginia, this is going to be a great opportunity for us to showcase Bowling Green to the entire state. There will be a lot of folks there, there will be a lot of good networking, and it should be really, really a great experience. There's some, the seminar will include some information on opportunity zones and some things that are specifically of interest to the town of Bowling Green.
Also, a couple of things. First of all, congratulations, you're a full-time employee at the first meeting.
Oh, I forgot to introduce myself.
Yeah.
You're newest employee.
And the other thing is, since you're going to that seminar, I wasn't there for my vacation and very sorry to miss it. But Heart and Soul is going to be there, and you'll get to talk to them personally. And also, on Wednesday, they do the awards, and hopefully, that's where we find out if we've got this grant that we applied for for Bowling Green Main Street. And that sounds like it's probably a pretty good chance that we did it. But you'll be able to be there to accept a grant award for it and give a little bit of wisdom to y'all for that over the town.
Yes, sir, honored to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time. Oh, do we have another question? Sorry. Oh, 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 yes, with your permission, I'm so sorry. With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd love to introduce Maria Luze, the owner of the Old Mansion, to the podium to speak about the Wine Festival bit.
So, it is always a pleasure for me to come to the Town Council, and I only come once a year. But it's a pleasure first because although I am not a permanent resident, I consider really my residence Bowling Green, and I really mean it. Really, I could be a resident anywhere in the world, and if I have to choose a place, it will be Bowling Green. And I wanted actually today to talk to you about something that I have talked to you in the past, and it's a call for action. And the benefit thing is a great success, and it's a great success in part because you have the Town Council really supporting it. We have like an amazing event coordinator, Joel Sa, and again, I have been all over the world, I'm really proud of the work that he has achieved in the last four years. It's really amazing, and to really kind of let us have some kind of a. And it is our vision that this, my husband and I, it is our vision that this event becomes only bigger and better with time. I do think that it has great potential, and for us, it's very important, not only because of the event, but because of what's behind the event. And it's the community, something that Anne today has actually mentioned. As you know, the proceeds, one of the conditions that we put actually for us to host this event is that basically a contribution is meant to the Calum and County Public Education Foundation. We do believe, my husband and I, that kids are our future. And if we want basically kind of like our kids be the great people that we think that they can be, commit like adequate education. I think that this is something that all of you here believe. So far, we have been able to be kind of like steps and small contributions. Our ambition is that this becomes something much bigger. And in order for this to become something much bigger, this is not Joel Sa or me or the mayor, it's all of us in this community. And all of us, I mean, I don't know how many registered residents we have, like a thousand, I want every single one of them. And every guy I can, and I told you, unfortunately, this year, we have some kind of like family things that prevented us actually from being more involved. But I want us to be more involved, all of us together. And it can be at different levels. It seems to me that right now, I think that the ticket sales that we have is about 309. It should not be kind of like difficult to double that number. So, I want to establish a challenge, as of today, July 11th of 2019, so that next year, we actually kind of like double this number. And if we double this number, we'll do a big party in the Old Mansion. So, this is my challenge to you and to everybody in this community. So, this is really an incentive mechanism for everybody to think very hard how we can double these numbers. Part of it is within, part of it is kind of like around us. I cannot imagine that we cannot get 100 or 200 people from Frenchville. I got like 60 people coming from Washington DC on the I-95. So, I think that it should be easy to get like 100 people from Frenchville. It may be easy also to get people from Ashland. It may be easy to get people from, I don't know, all around us, from kind of like Poroyal, from kind of like Colonial Beach. So, I want everybody to be thinking very hard, how can we actually get these numbers up? And the reason is not because of, okay, it's fun, which is really fun, and I think that every year we're adding new things. But the reason is because this actually benefits this community in a way that you may not see now or next year, but 20 years from now, you will have people that have gone through the public school system, that may be kind of really great citizens for this county and for this country. So, I really want us to all take it very seriously. My promise is, if we double, we'll do a big party. And now, what I want is that anybody that really has any ideas on how can we go there, kind of like, obviously, our contact point is your address, I'm creating more work for you. But I really want us to be more proactive, and I promise you that at least from our side, from the Old Mansion, we'll do everything in our hand to actually kind of facilitate your work. But I want us, all of us, to actually be part of it. And maybe there is something that we can think about with Main Street, that kind of, to another heart and soul, because I think that it ties very well with what I think we're trying to achieve. And again, I want to give some to this community because I really feel like I'm here, and I really mean it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Town Clerk Treasurer's Report. Are there any questions on the report?
Can I just point out one thing?
Just a minute.
I do want to point out that the videos like Rita mentioned are now on the website. It's an embedded YouTube video because we had some concerns from, well, we had planned on doing it, we got it done more quickly with the help of Jeff. And I had some concerns from citizens of the minute torque being posted in a timely manner because it takes a whole month to get the minutes up there, to be approved and then put up there. So, now, they're pretty much immediate, you can see the video. And I've also had questions about, you know, making copies and things, so they're up there, for everyone to see and review.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the Town Manager's Report. Are there any questions for the Town Manager? Do you have any comments?
Just that the main effort this month has been working with Anne Webber, and we'll be talking later on that. And also, our pump out letters for compliance with the Just Speak Day Act went out 30 days ago. We've got about half of them back, and they have another 30 days to get back to us on being sure that they pump their own septic at least once during the last five years.
Okay, thank you. Next item is their consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to motion to accept the consent agenda, there they are.
We have a motion by Mr. Gaines to accept the consent agenda, is there a second?
I have a second.
No, a second by this is Gaines. Is there any further discussion? Okay, here are no other discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is the Maury Avenue update, which isn't a huge update at this time, but I have spoken to David Beal a couple times since the last meeting. Vida, he was checking Vida to see if they would be willing to also do a speed study in conjunction with that private one that the citizen board of the town on getting set up. But I feel like if we do that now, with the construction going on, we're not going to get a true reading. So, my recommendation to him was, we kind of wait until after we get the payment done, they have a fresh speedway down Maury Avenue.
And. Yeah, the citizens that I talked with kind of felt that we certainly support at this point getting, go ahead, because Vida, so I believe that they would talk to us about where this little spot should be. And because of that, I think they're very supportive of that, and they, I think, to wait a month after they finish the work will be perfect. So, we can, like, but the one thing that's very interesting is the traffic calming plan. Do we, can we put that on agenda for next time?
Sure. We can, we can put a agenda and talk about it and then start it to the Streets and Southwalk.
We can, so that would be very, very good.
I mean, the Streets and Southwalk Committee would like to take a look at that. End the process between now and then, and then we can talk more about it. Perfect, thank you. Okay, next item?
I got a question for Reese. I know we just recently had a traffic study here in town, outside contractor did it for Vida. I gave you their card, Reese. We are able to, from their gatherings, we can get traffic studies for all the roads around town here that they did put the scripts on, that did their speed, weight, vehicle, all that. So, if we want to get something with right now that gives us an idea of what's going on just in the general of town, like Chase Street, they did Main Street, and it was, I think, Milford. We can get that from them, we do contact Vida, we got the contractor's name, and we should be able to get reports from them.
I'm not sure they have speed marked, but I'll, it's because they're doing the traffic count study, I think, of city counters.
I was, well, I stopped talking to the guy one day because I had questions about what they were doing and why. And he said that they can get that off of there, it's not like Vida was one, Vida was one that basically for class make, less sized vehicles, you come on these roads and, you know, for structural purposes, but he said you can add the multiple, the, that helps you speed on the road. That means it's something to look into.
I just have one quick thing. On Martin Street, there are modified speed tables or whatever you want to call them, they've been there for quite a while. Do we know who put them there or when they were put in? If you go down Martin Street, there are a couple of very shallow speed tables. People would say they're bumps, they're not, but there's about three of them.
I would say that possibly just some settling in the road. Since I've been in town and Daniel's been here longer than me. Settle down.
Well, these aren't sunk, they're raised. It's a hum.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we just need to note that when they come through and do their research in town, that we get that taken care of. I don't know, maybe we're leaving there, we haven't had any complaints. I don't know, maybe we're leaving there, we haven't had any complaints. Next item on the agenda is new business. We have a request for appropriation of sewer system fund balance. And this is due to an emergency repair due to the collapse of a sewer main at the intersection of Courthouse in Ennis. That collapse has been fixed. David L. Burks-Holland has fixed that, and we have a budget action form in our packet regarding the amount of $9,776 that we need to transfer to the appropriate fund.
Correct. This is basically, we had run out of money in our sewer budget, the dispatch office was backing up, and the main was collapsed, so I proceeded and fixed it and asked you to retroactively approve it and transfer, appropriate the money from the fund balance.
Okay. So is there a motion to appropriate these funds to the, of the sewer system fund balance?
And to appropriate the funds to the sewer balance?
Okay, we have a motion. I have this sound. Is there a second?
My second.
You have a second, but this is all. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the USDA Water System Loan Grant Application. Dan Webb's here to speak on that. Background summary, Webin Associates has completed a preliminary engineering report on needed improvements to the town bowling ring water system. I'll leave it at that. Daniel, explain to us.
I can give a brief summary of this. We've been working strategy on putting together a plan on what all our capital needs are for the water system. And as you recall, Andy Crocker from the Southeast Project came here to be assistance with a rate study. But the idea was, is we were going to put everything together to bring our system up to, to modern standards. We were going to look at what, what pipelines we need to fix in our system, how much it was going to cost to come to compliance with our new groundwater permit, which we have to raise the wells up, that we need to upgrade our mains, replace our mains, go to a radio read system, or we have a possibility also to collaborate with the county, because they have the equipment to read it, and it's very easy for a short period of time to, to read it. And to also put together asset management plan. One of the problems I've had in managing the system is, is people don't even know where the valves are, and they're supposed to be exercising them on a routine basis versus this C-ZI. And we've had additional repair costs, because we've had to find valves while flying them out there, then the valve breaks off, and then we have to shut off a lot of the portion of that. And this study also includes the cost of finding all those valves and putting their GIs in the system. Basically, the idea is, put everything you need in one package, and then go to the federal government and see what type of deal they'll give you. As, as I've said in the past, it will need some type of rate increase. We know that they have guidelines, all the funding agencies, that you know, spend at least 1% of your income towards repaying and running your system. And so what the plan is, is there's money available, we've got the PER done, which stands for, is done through USDA grant, which is to put an, that stands for Preliminary Engineering Report. So we're at the stage where we can submit application in, and see what deal the feds will offer us. And once I get that information, then I can bring Andy Crocker here, and we'll, we'll put together some proposed rate structures. And I'll tell you, it'll probably look more like the county than our current system. It'll definitely be monthly, because we're going to, to radio, radio review. And also, our tier structure really doesn't serve any purpose, because we only go up a nickel for tiers, and that does nothing to do with water conservation. If you look at the counties, or most other ones, as you go up in those tiers, there's a bigger gap in the incremental costs of buying additional water, and ideas that have encouraged water conservation on your system. So what Dan's here to do is to sort of give you an overview of, and I guess the mayor's going to be his chart man, of what they did. And after the presentation, we're going to ask that, because with the application deadline, it passed actually last Friday, but they said they would extend it to this Friday, if the council would give us permission to sign the application, either the mayor or myself.
Sure. I mean, Reese has really gone through, and what we've, we do very thoroughly gone through and looked and determined that most of the water we do in the county didn't need to be replaced. So we've included that in the preliminary engineering report. We've gone through and met with town staff, looked at different maintenance records, and, you know, we've sat down with William Stanley, and really went through the entire water system to determine, you know, what areas were having a lot of maintenance issues, and what areas need to be replaced. And, and really, that map there just shows, all of the areas that are highlighted in yellow are all of the areas that are deficient, and we have constant repair issues with. I mean, those are ones that need to be replaced immediately. You know, when, when I happened to be on town council years ago, William Stanley had prepared a, you know, and he was Public Works Director, he had prepared a drawing very similar that we all had. I pulled that out of my packet. And, you know, it identified areas, this was six, seven, it may have been two years ago, you know, reidentified areas that needed to be replaced. And I think right now, it's time to do that. So, you know, we went through that distribution system and really looked at it and evaluated, you know, what areas need to be replaced. That, that's just, you know, that area there shows tender subdivision, that's a need of replacement. And then there's a small section up near Farmer's Hill, outside of the town, but it's up there near the water tank. And there are a number of services that they've had to replace over the years. And I think it has something to do with maybe some of the salinity that, that have a reason for the water system to be there. But there are some areas there that need some replacing. And then the, the other thing we've looked at was just the GIS mapping. You know, right now, we're trying to go through and find asphalt for lines and locations in town, and there really is not anything. We don't know where a lot of valves are, a lot of that information was, you know, just stored, you know, historically in people's head, and they knew where things were, but over the years, if we've got staff, there, there really isn't anything in writing. And so we really need to go through and survey, locate all of those items and compare asphalt map. And so that, this PER addresses that as well. So what we're hoping to do is take this PER to the USDA. And we, we finished it, the, the staff says it looks complete, they're happy, they're happy with the package. They will now take it and see what, what grant money that they can give along with some loans. But they act as though there is plenty of money there today, and, you know, I'd like to take, I think that we should take advantage of that now, okay? Any questions? Before the meeting, we were talking about if we would, if we wait on this and do it on an emergency basis, it's going to cost us a lot more money, because the funds may not be there on the federal level. And you have to do it right then, because it's an emergency and the system's failing. So it's a great chance to, it's a great chance to go out there, see what the government will give us on this, and a chance for us to bring our water system up to the level of our sewer system that we've invested a lot in over the last few years. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor or town manager to sign all necessary application paperwork?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a...
Before you vote, I just want to point out, I handed out a second resolution which replaces the one that appeared in your packet. It's the one that actually came from the USDA. The first one, Reese had put together, and then we got the one that the USDA had sent.
Okay. Same content, basically, just their format. Okay? All right? You still support that motion in a second? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McDermott, and a second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? Here or none? We'll do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Danny. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Report of Council Committees and Member Comments. We'll start at this end.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm on the Utilities and Sidewalk Committee. Last month, we had a concerned citizen, Lynn Winahan, bring out the sidewalks on Maury Avenue. So about the middle of June, I met with her and Deborah Howard out there and walked the complete street of Maury and looked at the sidewalks, took a bunch of pictures. It is in very, very bad shape. Some places dropped that much, where it's broken and stuff. So I forwarded everything to VDA, and working with several people there. We should hear back something very shortly. I don't think they're going to replace the entire sidewalk, but at the least, we'll get some repairs, needed, much needed repairs down there.
Thank you.
We're on it. I'm coordinate and budget committee with Mr. Gaines down there, and I think I'm going to let him talk to what we discussed at this meeting, so we can just handle it until we get to him, if you'd like.
I'm on the EDA, and we do not meet.
There's no EDA meeting here, as I mean, coming up short, we're suddenly at full tactics, you know, so that helps me. Okay.
All right, yeah, me and Deborah, we met, and I know there was something that we're looking at, trying to push forward, for, looking for a town manager, and I know I said at the last meeting that we would come forward this month with three different ways that we can do it. I mean, and I mentioned in the last month that we would try to come through something more permanent. I think we're going to hold back on that, and we have a good reason why.
You want to take Reese's or...
What we're looking to do, and we'll, at our next meeting, we'll put something more, hopefully, that, and confirm that more. But Reese is looking to extend his employment here for a year. He's not ready to retire at the end of his term. He's wanting to stay on and extend out for another year. And we kind of feel that it's a really good idea, but we're just starting to get a lot of changes made, a lot of good steps being made. We've got water sewer plans going, and it would really be a shame to get somebody else in here, and we've got a lot of this project going on. So that's, we'll bring forth more information on that at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we'll add that to the agenda for next month in a closed session to further discuss possibly extending his contract.
The Planning Commission, well, I called in via phone. We had a joint meeting with the EDA. It didn't go on very long, there were some people that did not attend, so it was just really a quick kind of meeting. But for the Planning Commission, we are moving forward with the balance of the comprehensive plan, and we have six more chapters to go through. We'll be reviewing those the next time, next time we meet, which is next week. And that's where we are right now.
Okay, thank you. Next item, I don't have anything myself to report. Informational items, we have a report from a town attorney regarding the proposed zoning ordinance update.
Everybody, we're just thinking back, I'm going to read it all to you now. Come on. No, lots of credit to Melissa and Reese. We all spent a lot of time going over it, and we wanted to give it to you just because it is voluminous, and if there's something that we're tweaking, that you find profoundly objectionable, it would be helpful for us to know sooner rather than later. It is in draft form, there are numbering problems. We're working on it, as well as the, we're working off of a draft that the gentleman from New York in Florida provided to us. And there are several sections in green that we are sending to the appropriate state agency for them to update. So just, if you have any questions or any feedback about it, you know, please let one of us know.
Is this all online also? Is it on, I think it is.
It is in the packet.
Next item on the agenda is a closed session. In accordance with Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, is there a motion that the town council convene in closed meeting to consider a personnel matter involving the appointment of an individual to the Economic Development Authority? Motion by Mr. McDermott, is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Wright. Any further discussion? Okay, we will, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we're going to take a five to 10 minute break. One candidate is here, we're waiting on the other's arrival, and we'll reconvene in about five to 10.
Thank you.
Yes, we have a motion by Ms. Davis, and a second by Ms. Allen. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, we're going to take a five to 10 minute break. One candidate is here, we're waiting on the other's arrival, and we'll reconvene in about five to 10.
Thank you.
Yes, we have a motion by Ms. Gaines, is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
To certify?
To certify?
That only those matters was more, then I'm fighting a motion to go in the closed meeting, we discussed it, consider it.
A second.
And if each of you is individually certified?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is there any further discussions or any other items we discussed this conference?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we bring forth a vote on, his name, Donny Collins, is being appointed to the EDA.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Ms. Gaines, is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we will make contact with him and let him know. Sure. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like a motion to adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we adjourn.